State of delusion.
One day to the next.
There you go.
State of delusion. One day to the next.
There you go.
Pretty good for sure.
Yeah, you got it.
Easy way in the world. That's a good back here, man.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
The percentage is, is it under eighty or something like that? Or AMN. Is it under eighty? I'm trying to get that. Eighty-four now. Looking for into all their numbers. I mean, that's, I think that's the lowest I think I've seen. Because they reported eighty-four.
Literally, right.
What time did you got to get out Saturday? Two thirty? You didn't have long.
Not, not long after you left. It was long.
It was calm, didn't it? I'm all right.
Yeah, I left about a quarter after.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All you know, good to do, all you know. I've got a lot to do.
Oh, I can handle that.
I've got a lot to do, honestly.
Yeah.
I have my express, we don't want to.
But ready to get started if anyone wants to stand. Let your guests put some of the questions call by please.
Father in heaven, we thank you right now for this hour. We thank you for this opportunity. We bless your name because your name worthy to be blessed. Father, we call on you because you're the only one we've been taught that man can be saved. Just by that, calling on the word and the name of Jesus. We thank in awe of what you've done. We thank you for what you will do in the future and bless your name again. As long as we go through this meeting, we ask right now that we be able to do those things that is right and we will be able to get up satisfied but knowing this, Father, it's not about us, it is all about you and doing right. Blessing, yes, right now in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
As we invite the United States of America into the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and justice in all.
Welcome everyone to our meeting. This is Tuesday, March eighteen, twenty twenty-five, six P. M. We have a conference lines, number there is nine one seven, nine zero zero, one zero two two. Access code three two three four seven pound. This is not a toll free number and you may be subject to long distance charges according to your long distance plan. Would the chairperson open the meeting for public comment? Please follow the law instruction. If you wish to speak, please dial star five. The moderator will unmute your line unless your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address. You'll be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an amended item will be given three minutes for comment. At the time, everybody only speaks one time for each amended item. As said, we will move on to item three, approval of the agenda. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve our agenda on favor.
Aye.
Whatever new consent item, everyone had a chance to go over your consent item, any discussion, questions.
Got a couple on, which I think need to be corrected on number seven and number nine, where there's attachments mentioning what employment we have in Taylor County and it's still putting in buckeyes of five hundred and something employees. That needs to be taken out because we don't have those employees anymore, unfortunately.
Was that in the grant application?
It was in the, it was in the attachments to that and the grant application.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm sure that was just in a recite.
It was just to prove that I read all that stuff.
I know you read every word.
We had no doubt that you read it. Not every word I can tell, huh? I tried. Number eleven, it should be, if there's a contract attached to that, the venue should be exclusively state court in and for Taylor County exclusively. I keep adding words to that to make it even better, okay? But other than that, those are the only things I had which brought you your consent.
Very good. Any questions from the board, discussion? No questions or no discussion, only your consent items. We'll have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Your motion, we'll take it. Mr. Mason, I would favor. Item two, bids, public hearing, item thirteen. The board will receive bids set for this date at six P. M. or soon thereafter as possible for the first avenue, South Sidewalk Project intended by the county and new.
Yes, we have two bids, two bids that will open. So the first one is Anderson Columbia Company out of Lake City, Florida. Their lump sum bid price is one million, forty-five thousand, seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. One million, forty-five thousand, seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. And then the next bid is from LAS, LAS Contracting Corp. out of Tampa, Florida. Okay, last, Contracting Corp. or LAS Contracting Corp. out of Tampa, Florida. Their bid is eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
That bid committee will be Kenneth Dudley, Hank Evans, and Scott Knight. I'm sure they will bring a, an agreement, a recommendation and agreement back to the board at the next meeting.
Thank you. All right. Item fourteen, the board will receive a statement of qualifications for planning grant consulting services set for this date, pick to the point being sooner after the possible.
This is a SOQ and we received one bid for it. This one is Adams and Reese, L.L.P.
Mr. Clark, I believe that's a request for proposals instead of statement of qualifications. So there should be.
It says, yeah, request for proposal for grant consulting services is what it says on this.
Yes, it's a R.C.
The proposed fee schedule, professional services fee for planning grant consulting services, fifty thousand dollars.
So on that committee, it would be myself, Melody Cox, and Jamie Evans. And what I'd like to do for that particular proposal, if we can, if we can get everything organized and reach out to the consultant, I'd like to try to put a contract agreement on the, actually I have a special meeting next week, have that on the agenda so you can execute a contract and get moving this project because it's a very short turnaround.
We're going to do public request, item fifteen. Forgive me for pronouncing.
How about Mr. Neeson, just.
Well, Association of Counties Trust and Mr. Tom Conley for the latest discussion of insurance program updates.
Good afternoon, commissioners and Ms. Pemberton. Chair, I'll just say that I married it. The last name. He's a great guy. He is a great guy. For, for the last thirty-five years, we have had the pleasure of being the insurance carrier for your general liability and your cyber liability insurance here in Taylor County. You were one of the first members of the Florida Association of Counties Trust whom I represent. I'm standing before you tonight to present our annual report, closed out end of calendar year twenty twenty-four. So I will refer to the materials in front of you. The tri-fold is the brochure that highlights for you once again, and most of you are very familiar with this, the many, many benefits that come with your policy. You do not pay extra for these benefits. As a reminder, the Florida Association of Counties Trust was created by counties for counties as a not-for-profit public entity tool. We are different from other insurance carriers in that main aspect, okay? So please keep that in mind. The first page that I have included, the full-size page, it is from the Chrisner Group. One of the biggest benefits that all of our members receive is unlimited H.R. and employment law advice to your staffs. And when I say to your staffs, commissioners, I mean not only to the U. C. C., but the clerk of court, the supervisor of election, and the tax collector as well, okay? You can see on this report that in calendar year twenty twenty-four, there were two hundred and eighty-four electronic mail communications with any of those groups within the county, saving you all anywhere from thirty to fifty thousand dollars in legal fees, okay? That is included with your policy. Also included at the very top of that page, you will see the annual audit of employment files that happened this past year through both Ms. Pemberton's office and Clerk Knowles' office, okay? And at the very bottom, you see all of the other educational trainings that were afforded to your staff and that, I might add, were well attended by your staff. If you would, for me, take a look at the sheet that has the American flag at the top, that is the current year's calendar of training activity. You can see, if you will look on the left-hand side, on February fourth, just a little over a month ago, we were actually here in Taylor County to do our regional roundtable training. Again, I just want to highlight that those are incredibly well-attended by all of your employees in Taylor County. Clerk Knowles, Ms. Pemberton may be able to throw in a little editorial comment here and there, the value of these trainings and what it provides to your staffs. Again, those are provided to you all at no additional cost, okay? Those are all free. And then that is just a synopsis of what is offered this year. And the very last large flyer I have included for your information today, F.A.C., as many of you know, offers the I.C., through your I.C.G. program, the Certified County Commissioner Program. They also offer something called the C.G.E., the County Government Employee Education Designation. If any of the employees within the Taylor County system would like to earn that designation and take those classes, because you are a member of the Florida Association of Counties Trust, there is no fee for those courses for your employees. They are free, okay? Another huge benefit to encourage your employees to keep learning and to keep updated on everything from H.R. and employment law to workers' comp issues, you name it, anything that's going to affect their day-to-day operations, okay? If you'll just real quick look back at the tri-fold brochure, and I just want to highlight on the far right-hand side, all the benefits, I will not read it for you, so I'll let you do that at your leisure. We are pleased to work with Taylor County. You can, I am probably on the phone with Ms. Pemberton at least once a week, if not more, answering questions for either her or a member of her staff. We are aware that you all are facing a humongous shortfall on your budget and we are going to do everything we can to get those premiums as low as we can possibly get them.
That truck keep you up outside is definitely a money ad.
And I do not have a money tree in the backyard of my house in Monticello either, which I did. I just live up the road from y'all in Monticello. At this point, I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Tom Conley, who represents the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, and he can bring you an update from that arm of your insurance as well.
Thank you, Denise. I've been at this a long time. Some of you probably have seen me in here over the years. In case there's any confusion of why there's two different programs, we are, she was talking about the Association of Counties, we are the Association of Cities, or League of Cities. We also have an insurance program. We are by far the largest insurer of local governments in the state. Formed that program at a time when regular insurance companies were walking away from cities and counties and they were just, they were not happy with insuring counties and workers' comp and elected officials came to the league for a solution, and that's how we formed this Florida Municipal Insurance Trust.
When you was that, you, seventy-seven?
Been that a long time. Several years ago, we joined forces with FAG. We administer their program because we, our program is much bigger. They don't have the staff to do the administration and the claims adjusting and everything, so our people in our office do that for FAG and it's, we were talking about synergy, the company, but there's a synergy when these two programs work together. And you guys have enjoyed that for a long time. I just really want to thank you for your loyalty to our programs. As Denise said, you've been in both these programs a long, long time. And she touched on the fact that we're a nonprofit. We were formed at your request, where our board is elected officials. We're not in this to make money. There's really only one competitor, which you heard from someone representing that company a few weeks ago, I think. But it's such a niche market to insure all the various things that governments do that there's just not a lot of carriers out there. There's really only two. When you've got one that's formed by associations and everything we do, we design it with you in mind. We don't want to run angry, but we also are not out to make profit and pay stop orders and everything else. So it's just a different mindset of how we approach claims. We want to pay everything we need to pay to you. We're not sending money to stop course. And you, some of you may remember when I was coming in here with these return premium checks. I think I presented checks at a few of these meetings. Probably can't remember this now where you guys live, but there was a period of about ten years, fairly recently, where there were no hurricanes and state of order is very quiet. And rather than pocketing that money or building our surplus, we were returning it back to the people because we had enough surplus, we were financially stable. For ten years, we were returning money, almost like a dividend. You can't call it a dividend, but it's a return premium. And that's, that's what sets us apart from these other companies and our programs being your associations. We're just, we're going to help you in any way we can. Sounds like LaLonda and I need to chat tomorrow, she's got some questions on some of the rebuild going on. That was a lot, any questions?
Look forward to the, hey, you can come back with us. That was fun.
I think we have peaked on the, on the rates in Florida. I think this year is going to look much better than the last couple did. Yep. We haven't finalized things that's going to be figured out next month, and our board will be voting in June, but so far, so good. We're looking good for property renewal, so.
Mr. Chairperson, if I could, how is that even possible?
Don't ask me.
I mean, with all of the hurricane activity the last eighteen months, how was it possible?
These last were just not enough to move the needle like you do with an E.N. type of storm where it hits, you know, a large metropolitan area.
I got you. I understand.
So these markets, they react and, you know, one pretty costly storm happens and boom, rates go up and then it's quiet, they come back down. So now they're, they're feeling good again, they being the reinsurers, the people that we buy our insurance from, lloyds of living in that type of, that's how that happens. It's very sporadic.
I mean, I'm grateful, but that was not what I was expecting. But I think we've just, we're so accustomed to the hurricane activity here in the last little over a year that I have a vote anywhere else.
Thank you.
Item sixteen, Mr. Michael, to discuss VFW home.
Mr. Thred, do you want me to update the board on the situation with that building first? We do, so. Well, just to clarify, and then I can talk about it again later, but the board had approved a potential of a long-term lease for the VFW for the closed voting house on Kellygrave. And shortly after the action from the board, I received notification that that actually was, there was a contract that I wasn't even aware of with Ford Rivers now. And if we are not utilizing that for county purposes, it must be returned or it must be exchanged with them. Then subsequently, Mr. Thred and I talked and he felt like that building was too small anyway, so.
Now it is because now we actually have an actual auxiliary going. We've been trying to get started for about seven years. We've managed to get that started, so now we have forty, fifty of our post members showing up, and then we have twenty auxiliary members showing up. And then we have to meet separately, but we meet at the same night because our wives are in it, our grandkids are in it, because that way we're not getting wasted gas money the way the economy is. So, anyway, first of all, thank you all for allowing me to come up here and speak to you. Really appreciate y'all. And we've uncovered most of this already, but regarding the home, to be able to, because this place on Kellygate Green is not going to be available, we're hoping maybe I might have another place that's not out of sight, out of mind. Because we were told that's why we were getting that place by another official. You know, I don't want to get into all that, but like I told y'all before, we're going to, we really need a place where we can start on hurricane relief supplies. Because we, as I'm sure you've all seen, we, every year that we've had a hurricane, we give out tons and tons of hurricane relief supplies. But it would also be nice if we could have a place where we could do our fundraising. Because right now, we're bouncing around trying to do fundraising, see where it's there. And it's getting to be very, very difficult for us.
How big of a location do y'all feel like you'd be?
Well, yeah, essentially. The, I would say, if we had something on it, on a couple of acres where we could do a fundraiser outside, you know, with the, with like the big red bus and whatnot like we did with the salute veterans and maybe twenty-five hundred square feet in building space that we can, that we can cook in, that we can have two separate meetings. And the, again, like the salute veterans, we pretty well filled that up.
Oh, and y'all meet again?
We meet one thing.
Once a month?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If, if there's no fundraisers going on, we just finish the fundraiser, that's we go.
Also, we, anyway, we have one, just our meetings. We get together, like this, this past month, we had three different meetings. I can, I have to call special meetings for, to do certain stuff in competition time. If we don't, it's a lot of chaos and out of the way of an auxiliary, we're having to have a joint meeting with them besides our regular meetings, so we give our fundraising ideas and our dinners and what we're going to do for the local youth, how we, how we can help our senior citizens. Like I said, we just want a place where we can, you know, make sure we have adequate space to store hurricane relief supplies and not to mention our stuff from our previous posts. We have display cases, we have military, you came out there, didn't you? We have military uniforms going back to World War One, and we have one that's a naval uniform, it's pre-World War One, when they made the naval uniforms out of canvas. What we were doing was we had the schools come out and bring their students to come see these uniforms, talk to us and actually be able to touch part of our history and speak to us about the wars that we fought in. We keep it secret because these are children. But it's a nice learning experience for them. I mean, even the teachers were in awe over it.
I don't know if we would have, LaLonda, I don't know if we'd have an actual answer tonight, but I do have a couple of folks that actually.
Appreciate any assistance y'all can give us. And if it's our, with y'all, I have one more thing I'd like to speak about. I heard we're losing our veteran service officer, Damian Walter. Have y'all found a replacement yet?
We're accepting applications and I believe we have two people applying.
I have one of my post members, that's interested in this, but he's not certified through the state, though.
We'll have to, I would encourage him to go ahead and apply and that's something we can, we can take a look at, okay?
He's not a citizen, he's, he's a combat veteran and, of course, he's a Marine, but he, he, he's a good people person. And he really cares about our vets. That's why he joined our post is to help our vets. That's why he joined our posts is to help our vets. And once again, thank y'all for your time and I really appreciate y'all letting me get up here, run the gums. And I appreciate any help y'all can do for us.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
To constitutional officers, other government units, item 17. The board to consider approval of contract with Weatherstem, agendas about any globe emergency management.
How y'all doing? So, we've got the opportunity to put a Weatherstem station here in Taylor County. Most, all other counties have at least two or three of these in their county, but it's just a station that we can, we're not decided exactly where we want to put it, but it's online so that way you can log in at any time. There's a camera so you can log in to see the weather at that time, you know, the temperature, humidity, all that stuff, good stuff that you get with, with the weather station. And one good aspect of that is, is our community can also use this. Lord forbid we don't have another hurricane, you know, we get a storm or strong winds come through in the hurricane. Your insurance says you didn't have 80 mile an hour winds. Well, we actually can use this weather station to prove that we did have 80 mile an hour winds or 90 mile an hour winds or, or things like that. So it's a big help to the residents. Also, we look at, we can incorporate with the schools. There's a lot of lessons that the schools can use with this Weatherstem station. So that's why I'm coming to ask to approve this contract, FDM. So because we're fiscally constrained, we'll pay for the contract for the first three years. They can't guarantee it, but they will, as long as they receive the funding because we're fiscally constrained, they will continue to pay for the contract after that. That's, that's, you know, we're just going to put it in writing, but that's what they're asking us to do.
Don't we have something similar in this, not as our air force?
Not a, not a Weatherstem. We may have used to have had, a long time ago, we did have some Weatherstems. I know like Big Ben Tech had one. There, that one's no longer there. They kind of restructured the company a little bit and now their focus is more on community and schools and making sure that they keep these, these stations up and running.
Do you don't have a location?
So we're kind of narrowing down either, because it's got a camera, so I'd like to get a good view for our residents to see the area. One was the bridge at St. Hatching was, we had mentioned that, the top of the courthouse, I majored at the top of the EOC, just some locations that we, we had talked about. I didn't want to get it too high because if we are able to use that for wind speeds and wind gusts for our residents, I don't want insurance to come back and say, well, y'all had it too high. You know, that's not going to be useful.
So would this be one location or?
Just, just one. We're just looking at one weather station right now.
What's the initial cost?
So there's no cost. And years four through 10, FDM's not able to cover that. We're looking at about 1,800 to 2,000 a year for magnets that would come out of my budget through my grant. So I would cover that. So there's no cost to the commission. Now, a lot of counties have three or four. I just don't really feel comfortable jumping out of that with not knowing 100%. They would pay, pay for that in those years worth it to you.
This is a memorandum of understanding. I just want to put some of the high points on it as far as we're concerned. Recipient would have agreed to maintain each weather station and receive for at least an additional seven years after the three years. That's on the first page. Also, the recipient, that's y'all, expressly agrees to be fully responsible for the maintenance, repair, software updates, and any other costs of the weather station for the duration of the estimated lives following the expiration of the three-year period. Again, that's those 10, seven years that you're going to be responsible for that unless like, it doesn't say unless, at least I didn't see that. So that's another thing. Also, if it ceases operation in the 10-year life or if the weather station is destroyed by an accident, not otherwise covered by insurance, neither party, neither party is obligated to replace that. That was a good one on that. And then lastly, guess what? Venue is. Yeah. That's, that's a bug in my saddle. A bird in my saddle, I mean. But anyway, when you get, as I always tell you, we're going to do it. We probably have to go ahead and agree to that, but that's why I'm so firm on one that we prepare, and it's all in Taylor County, that I'd say that venue is exclusively in state court in Taylor County. Because Slip Lawyer one time tried to put in and say venue is in Taylor County in all courts and they would pop you up to Leon County in federal court just as sure as my name's Buster Bishop. I'm telling you that.
You should be a local, I'll ask you about that.
Yeah. Anyway, those are just kind of the high points and low points of this memorandum. There's always something, ain't there?
Yes, sir.
There's always something.
Yes, sir.
You got something with the castle?
Always just going to add the, the system that's at the airport goes to the National Weather Service, so that's their own independent thing. We don't have really access other than what you can log onto their system and get on that one. And then during the hurricanes, they put up two temporary ones that we in the EOC relied on pretty often because it did give us constant video feeds of the St. Hatching area everywhere they were, there when they were located. And it also additionally gave us that real-time wind speed that we could look onto, especially when we were looking at when do we need to stop emergency services. It told us, is this, in this area, can we continue or do we need to shut it down versus the north, north side of the county may, may be completely calm. It gave us a lot better resources of, you know, when we kind of came to our decision making at that time of. So they are good systems and what's really nice is they are self-contained. So even if the power goes out, it stays operational as long as cell towers and everything still.
Any questions from the board? Right? Another question from the Taylor County.
I think you got it for you.
You have a second?
Thank you.
Take it back, take it down, out of favor.
All right. Yes, thank y'all. Appreciate it.
17B, another addition here. The board to discuss speed limit change on Dorment Road, adjourned by Commissioner Jim Moody.
What it is, it's, I don't know if y'all familiar with Dorment Road, you go down the bucket road, pass the golf course road, it's a dead end road that turns to the right. People live on both sides of it all the way down to the end. They got a sack at the end and turn around, come back out. The people that live on the road, it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit now and they have a lot of trouble. People flying up and down the road. They wanted to change it to 15 mile an hour. That's what they want to do. And it's just a short road. I mean, it's no big deal. It's not like, no curve, straight shot. And changing to 15 would be, you know, it's not going to slow everybody down, but it might set example for everybody to be safer. It's a safety issue because there's a lot of children in the neighborhood and they're all in the road on the bicycle.
Would it have any type of speed bumps or?
No speed bumps or anything. It's just a graded road. It's just a graded road.
Oh, my God. Not paved?
Not paved.
No.
Go ahead, sir. I live on Dorment Street, so I, I can say, yeah, 15 miles an hour would probably be the best. There's a bunch of dogs on it, kids who play on the street and all that. So it would probably be for the best if it was 15 miles an hour, 20 at least.
Yeah.
Just because people will fly down the road and all that and it's just, it would be just better for the best.
Does our attorney need to prepare a resolution to bring back to the board?
Ma'am?
I was asking Mr. Conrad if he needed to prepare a resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
So we need to make a motion for you to do this?
Yes.
Yes, sir. We have a motion by Commissioner Dips to make a fair resolution. A second by Commissioner Moody, out of favor.
Aye.
Is it just Dorment Road or does it have a?
Dorment Peacock. Dorment Peacock.
Dorment Peacock? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Well, we'll send it to you tomorrow, Conrad.
Okay.
Right. It will go, you know. I guess I skipped over 17A. My apologies.
My apologies.
Wait for you. It's okay. We're back up in a minute. Here's to 17A. The board to discuss, but please, adjourned by Commissioner Mark.
Well, I, I'm not mad at you, Mr. Chairman. I wondered what happened to letter A, but it's okay. We won't have a debate about that. I do appreciate the opportunity to bring this to the board. And I realize this has been discussed previously. I don't know if everybody's hearing this. Can you hear me, Mr. Moody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, given the issues that we're working through with our budget and understanding what we, I believe can say is a resource with our boat ramps, how that benefits our residents and our business owners and tourism and all the rest, really it's a continuation and, and those impacts are really a necessity if we consider what we've lost. When we see about these ramps and, and the attraction and, and the resource, what it brings to us, the potential that we have for the future and growth and, and also how that is really just a benefit to our residents that are here locally that we certainly don't want to forget about. But I wanted to bring this to our board and, and have a conversation. I have, I know that the governing agency is FWC when it comes down to that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Counselor. So we've had this conversation, but I have spoken with FWC and they asked if I would bring this to our board for discussion so that we could have an approved, proposed schedule, fee schedule for discussion with their agency. I've talked with our clerk at court and our tax collector and I appreciate their, them and their staff for the information that we've been able to provide. And so the proposal, and I would make this into a motion to, to approve contingent upon agreement with FWC, if that's okay.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Moody and I know all about.
You had that experience?
Oh, boy.
Okay.
It's going to cut our heads off.
Well, I don't want to get in that line. I guess y'all can take care of that. But what I would say, what the proposal is and understanding where we are at, and we do not want to make this a further burden on our residents. And so in the conversation with FWC, the, the proposed fee would be to retain the current rate for our Taylor County residents. And for non-ret, which the rate, correct me, Mr. Knowles, if I'm wrong, that's $5 a day and $20 annually, which we would retain for our Taylor County residents. And the proposed fee for non-residents would be $10 a day and $40 annually, which we can understand and a little research with that proves and shows adjacent counties are at rates much, much higher than even what we are proposing. So that's the reason I wanted to, this board demonstrate to our residents that we certainly still have them at heart, knowing the burdens we've already been through and that's been discussed at length with FWC, but that we also still have needs for maintenance, which these funds will have to be dedicated to, the maintenance of our boat ramps so that we can go forward and understanding we do have constraints in our budgets, but we also will see this as a catalyst or mechanism to be able to maintain these resources that are, that are necessary. They're, they're not just a want to, but that these are really a necessity when we look at going forward and we look at the losses that we've had. So the proposed fee again would be for Taylor County residents, $5 a day, $20 annually, which is the current fee. We would maintain that. And we are willing to have a proposed fee of $10 a day for non-county residents and $40 annually. And so I'm more than glad to discuss that with the board, but I would make that into a motion at the appropriate time.
I would just, I don't really have a problem with it, but I just, a couple of questions would be, out of town, out of county landowners, will they consider on the local rates because they're going to be able to, whether they pay taxes in the county? And then how on the $5 and the $10, who is that going to be left up to distinguish and collect at the boat ramp? Or is that just a good buddy system that hopefully out of, out of, out of a non-Taylor County resident, are they going to speed up some, leave the $10 that, based on the signage that may be put?
Certainly pertinent questions. We talked that with our clerk and the tax collector. We're looking at the process of possibly having QR codes, which would minimize some of the need for cash, drop box, things of that nature. But these would be, you know, details that, that really the clerk and the tax collector would, would agree upon as far as who was going to do what the day rates or the annual rates as they do currently. I believe that y'all still have that agreement as far as how that's managed. So by understanding and confirming or quantifying the non-resident or resident, I believe other municipalities use the registration of the boats in some cases, but really those are particulars that we can agree upon with the clerk and with our tax collector. But we have considered, you know, how do we get to that point so that it's, it's an even fee and we have a fair system? But I don't know, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, I mean, I, you know, I mean, the annual ones, I don't think would be any problem whatsoever. You know, I mean, they can, they can determine that based off of, you know, if they're a landowner in Taylor County or not. The daily, I think we could still identify it. Now, you know, as far as, you know, we would have to try to probably do something because what we were thinking was they'd scan a QR code, they'd put in some information and be charged $5. Maybe the system could do that based off of a zip code or something. I don't, I don't, I don't know. But we could certainly have a non-resident and a resident selection there.
Are they going to get some? I'm just thinking of someone maybe riding around checking these vehicles. Are they going to be a kind of flyer or sticker that they may get that ones, one identifies that, hey, I'm, I'm a out of county, non-county resident, individual and just identifies around in county, Taylor County.
So the, the thought was is that whoever's checking those would have to have a laptop or something to look at who registered for the day, a list of who registered to determine if they paid or not. And it would be by tag or registration or address or whatever we decide that, that the what data's needed. But they would be, have access to that data in the only way. So there wouldn't be a, there wouldn't be any paper or any tags or anything like that. It would be a, here's a list of who's paid and just, you know, matching it. It'd be, it probably had to be tag numbers if they're going to be able to identify it with the vehicle.
Sure.
So it probably had to be their license plate number, so.
Absolutely.
Now, as far as non-residents and residents, that, that might be, that might be a little bit tricky, but, you know, it might have to be more our system or there might be a way to tie that together. We just have to try to work that out.
I think outside of anyone knowing that this was on our agenda for tonight, I had several calls in the last few days and I'm telling us the, the, the field was to raise the out of county residents to anywhere from $300 to $500 per year.
Well, we, we have to be rational. Well, I know we do. So in conversation with our, our FWC partners, you know, we, we just entered into a discussion as to looking at, you know, closer to the areas or counties that have these, these same, let's say, fee schedules or, or a similar variation because of a non, or a non-resident or a local resident. So, you know, and, and none of those things are set in stone. It's just the fact that we realize and see where we're at and the needs that we're going to see coming forth. So the thought process was this, this could be a starting point that we can land on. If we see the needs for maintenance continue to grow, I, I believe we could revisit that, you know, but we're, we're really still talking two-fold, twice over for non-residents versus residents. and not raising the fee on our folks that have been subject to so many setbacks and loss. So it just seemed like a fair point of initiation. And so at the same time, you know, I think we also have to be considerate to the both sides of the coin. I don't believe that will. I mean, I've had conversations, you know, with our folks.
About, oh, still with county, I pay eight dollars.
Yes.
On some of my boats now, three hundred miles.
Yes.
And that was the only one that make a difference.
Yes. Well, I mean, we, you know, we are open, we're grateful that FWC was open to the conversation, number one. I mean, given the past experience, we don't want to get in the eye of Mr. Bishop where it's an execution and those kind of things. We didn't have to fire a squad come out, thankfully. But it just was a way to look at these costs and expenses and see a path to be able to deal with the issues that we see at hand and also have some revenues for future use and needs that we see coming on. So again, that's kind of the basis.
I might say one thing about it. People, people don't realize that we maintain the garbage pickup, the cleanup and the mowing. We do forty johns and we have to keep them up. I mean, there's more expense now than there ever was because we got a lot nicer than there ever was. And so, I mean, it's, I'm fine with it. We tried this once before and then Mr. Bishop got his ears bent for it, more or less. FWC, I believe they'll work with you now.
Well, you know, understanding the, the, all the negativity from the storms and costs, expenses, everything else and hardships, I think that did factor into the discussion. I didn't, I didn't name drop, so I don't know who y'all talked to, but I'm glad I hadn't ran into that individual, whomever they are.
Well, I think they probably brought it off into the sunset.
Hallelujah. We won't be looking for them.
When you go to other states, Georgia, France, that's right, it costs you a lot more for out-of-town people, for hunting, fishing and everything. You know, all the way across the country, you live a lot higher for out-of-town people and out-of-state people. But, I mean, it's just a situation where we've, we've tried to be as close and cheap as we could all these years, but just, just keeping up the forty johns has got expensive. Maintenance has got more expensive, but, you know, it's everything that got.
You know, given the, given the extent of the storms and the damages that, you know, we don't have any crystal ball to see or know what the upcoming maintenance costs are going to be. But we know that if, if for nothing else, the age of the ramps and elements that they're being exposed to are going to sooner or later have to be dealt with. So I think all those things in consideration and the discussions that I had with our FWC partners, they've been fair, I would say. And so, you know, we just are thankful for everybody's had a part in the conversation. And again, our clerk, tax collector and their staff, I love the staff, of course. So, you know, it's certainly not set in stone, but it's good to have, at least have a conversation without getting the ax.
Right. The floating dock issue, I know you've got a lot of calls about the floating docks. You know, calls have come in every week to me about why ain't we got floating docks? Why don't we got floating docks? We gonna get them and like that. Tell people, you know, we're gonna get them built, gonna get them back down there, but there's nothing you can do of it now.
Well, and I believe this Friday, Mr. Lawanda, we're going to be.
Friday is the deadline to receive quotes for the repair of the docks. And we've included within the quotes a separate provision for one, the restoration of one floating dock at Keaton and one at Steen Hatchie with a deadline of thirty days to install those. So we're really trying to get that, something installed at both ramps as soon as possible.
It's just an interim auction so that we, we understand the scope of the total.
They were heavily damaged, unfortunately.
So the total repair is going to be timely. And it should be because we don't want to rush that. We don't want it to be unsafe. We can't afford to do that. However, I mean, I appreciate the staff's efforts to at least have a solution in the interim, knowing that season, as warm as it was today, is really upon us. So we're trying to get to that place. Thank you for all those efforts.
So I think Conrad and I are maybe on the same wavelength. But my recollection, and I believe we've attempted twice to have separate boat ramp fees for county and non-county residents. And both times we were told that we were not able to do that because the funds came from permit fees for the entire state of Florida. Does this sound familiar, Conrad?
It does. And we are on the same. What I would like to do is I want, if possible, for FWC to tell us, are we going to do all this and then get its na food? Because you can't charge a person that doesn't live here more than you do one that does live here. That's where it got, it got stopped. It got stopped. And so I don't, like I said, I think that's the first question that I would ask, that, because some of these funds may have come from the state, with the state being the conduit from the feds. Do you understand where I'm coming from? So my suggestion would be, okay, we probably want to do this, you know, because it's a good idea, but we don't want to go all the way, get it all prepared and then have that happen.
So, so the reason to bring that this evening was so this Board could be in agreement with the proposed schedule fee or fee schedule, whichever way you want to repeat that, so that we can demonstrate that to FWC that the Board is in agreement in, in the proposed fee schedule. So in the discussion, we've absolutely had the conversation and numerous times of feet of the requirements of the funds that were previously used. So this isn't a surprise or gotcha game or to try to sneak around with our partners, but that we've been very forthcoming in understanding that previously there were, let's say, prohibitors to getting to that place that has, that has been looked into by their staff and their folks. And what I've been told is that there's not a constraint currently. I'm not sure if it's a timeframe sunset. I'm not a legal department with FWC. I only know what I was told is that if we could agree upon a proposed fee schedule.
I'd love an email.
I actually happen to have one. So you're, you're living right, Mr. Bishop. So just wanted to bring that to staff and our Board.
Do you mind forwarding that to me? And then I can forward that email to the Grants Department within FWC and make sure that it's within the terms of our grant agreement. Because I think that's where we stalled last time, was because of the grant funding that was provided for the Steen Hatchie and the Keaton Beach boat ramp.
I certainly will. I mean, I believe they've had discussions in turn. So I don't have a problem with that. My, my thought is, you know what? I'll have all the conversations necessary if we can get to this point and see this through, given time lapse.
So that's no worry.
If it comes out that I have to get in the eye of Mr. Bishop and Mr. Moody, well, I guess I'll be in good company. We won't be lonely. But given the situation currently and knowing what we have at our ramps and the needs that will be coming, if we wind up and they say, sorry, no dice, then that's, that's the way it is. But it's not going to be because we're not working in behalf and on behalf of our folks, knowing of the things that we see coming.
You also get, I mean, don't want to burden your citizens, local citizens.
Absolutely.
But you, you do, that has to be the same across the board. You could potentially go to thirty bucks and ten dollars for everyone. And always, you know.
Sure. I mean, I, you know, I'm not set on any, any fee. My focus was understanding where our people are at and the hardships they've been through. And if there's a way that, given all of that occurrence, we can work through this and come to this proposal, let's go.
One thing about the new ramp, if we get the spring warrior oil situated, we haven't got a FWC grant for them, so they really won't have no control over that.
Correct.
You know, so that'll be a.
Their funds, their revenues.
Blessing, hopefully, for us when we get that squared away. Down the road, we might want to, you know, get a grant to do some repairs there or, I mean, build seawalls and floating docks and all that kind of stuff there. And if we do, we might have to get into that direction. Or maybe we can work in a different direction, not get tied up with them. Yeah.
I hope not.
So moving forward, Christian Newman is going to forward a confirmation email to maybe Mr. Lawanda, Mr. Bishop.
Well, if we move forward, I would like to make a motion that this Board approve the proposed fee schedule of maintaining the residence fee of five, of five dollars a day and twenty dollars annually and proposing a non-residence fee of ten dollars a day and forty dollars annually.
I'll take that motion.
All right, we've got a motion on the table by Commissioner Newman and a second by Commissioner Moody, all in favor.
All right. Carry it forward and see what we get.
Sure.
Go carry it forward and see what we get.
We're going to see if we can get there, Mr. Dent.
All right. Moving on to County Staff, out of lot of eighteen, the Board is going to review Phase Two fire investigations through design via RFQ submissions and consider approval of request to move forward Phase Two proposals from the shortlisted parties scheduled by Dan Castle.
Good evening, everybody. So the big committee went over the RFQs. We had three that were submitted, as you can tell on our scoring sheets. We scored ramp construction and gray construction as the top two. So the big committee's recommendation is to advance those two into a Phase Two where they'll give us their pricing. And their option would be either do none of them or go ahead and advance all three, since there's only three that turned in. That is under the Boards.
Your recommendation is to move the two into the.
Yes, so there was some issues on the, the third one. There was some documentation that was missing out of their RFQ. Things that we could probably go back with them and, and get if we needed to. But since they did not submit and the other two did, we, that was one of the things that kind of pushed the other two forward. They were very well qualified.
Any questions from the Board?
And those craigs that.
Gray construction and ramp were the top two.
I move.
Motion by Mr. Dent, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moody, all in favor.
All right. Yeah.
Out of nineteen, the Board to consider approval of change order number one in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for contract demolition, new construction work through the CDVG program on the home of Tina McMillan, presented by Melly Cops, rent rider.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Melly. Good evening.
We have a change order number one for this home in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars as it has been determined that they do need a new well and septic system when Taylor County Health Department did an inspection. So I need your approval to move forward with that. This is one hundred percent branded, grant funded through CDVG grant program.
Understood. Any more?
I move.
Motion approved by Christian Dent, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moody, all in favor. All right. Thank you, Melly. Over to that there. Out of twenty, the Board to consider approval of change order number one in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for contract demolition, new construction work through the CDVG program on the home of Joey Tooten, presented by Grant Rider.
It's the very same situation that Health Department determined that the existing septic system is unusual, is unusable as well as the well water needs, they need pressure tank and pressure switch. Again, this is one hundred percent grant funded.
Understood. Any discussion?
Same.
You got a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Dent, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moody, all in favor.
Thank you, Melly.
Thank you.
County Administrator, out of twenty-one, the Board to receive update regarding these proposed building sites to the BFW post ninety-two twenty-five, presented by a lot of.
As I mentioned earlier, it has come to my attention that we have an agreement with, with Four Rivers. It was fully land and timber, fully timber and land at the time, an agreement that was executed in two thousand and six. My understanding is, as far as the history of this agreement, was that when we closed the Old Landville, we needed additional properties, I think, for monitoring. And so we entered into this agreement with, with them and there was a conveyance of four closed roll-off sites to Four Rivers at the time. And then there are an additional eight, I believe, on the list. So when this, you know, when the Board agreed to use this site for the BFW, it was in the paper and I, someone from Four Rivers reached out to me and educated me about this agreement. And I guess what I need from the Board, they would, they would like for the county to convey this back to them. What I would like from the Board is to, to give me some direction of if you, if you want us to try to negotiate with them to keep this property for some type of future county use. There has been a little bit of discussion with Commissioner Newman about using it as perhaps a staging area. There, there, I think, are multiple potential. What I am not exactly sure about is if this would be within the spirit of the agreement. I think the original agreement was that once the county stopped using it for county purposes, which this is a building that was a voting site for the supervisor, then we would, our next step would be to convey the property back to, back to them, which we did not because I was unaware of this. So I don't know if you wish to speak to this, Commissioner Newman?
Absolutely, I do.
How much land is there?
Maybe an acre, somewhere thereabouts. I would just say, I don't believe that the county has ceased or the use has ceased. And, and I'm saying that even as recent as last week, the county staged a piece of equipment on this property. So there's, there's quite a potential in respect to this parcel of property and the reality that I don't believe they're making any more property, Mr. Bishop. So, Mr. Glover, perhaps, in the spirit of emergency management, you could help me in that respect. But I think there's all sorts of possibilities in the utilization of that parcel. And one of those things is that it just happens to be on, on the location of one of our routes, you know, of escape. So when we talk about the, the numbers of possibilities and knowing that we're not considering hypotheticals in many cases and being limited in space when we have these events, we don't have to really think back very far to understand how not just a equipment, but if it were a host of assets or resources through emergency management. So, Mr. Glover.
Yeah, I mean, as far as a staging area, maybe for equipment, food, you know, even if it was tarps, MREs, water, so, you know, you are, you do have a good county road there to get in and out. So, I mean, that is a good location if we ever needed that.
Right. So, I mean, I understand the Sutherland, it does not need that for the supervisor elections in office. And I'm quite pleased for our voters that they have better amenities, given the current arrangement, I believe, the thing about the church. So I would just say, I don't believe the county's use has ceased. And I'm not sure if it was explicit in saying that it had to be maintained as a voting site. But I would, I would demonstrate that there is a magnitude and a multitude of potential uses for this parcel. So my, my request would be not to convey the county's use of that property, given the resource and the potential that it has there.
Were they the ones that wanted it back?
I believe that's correct.
It was a mutual understanding between the county and, and the land. It was a mutual understanding between the county and, and the land and timber company at the time. And it did benefit, I mean, it has benefited us greatly, being able to enter into this agreement to exchange the properties. Um, Danny, would you be willing to write, to just, to write me a short letter that I could send to them explaining the potential emergency management uses?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what is the benefit on both parties?
It was the exchange, I believe, of, of properties, given the lead the county had, if I'm not mistaken. Excuse me.
Yes. So, so there were four sites, there were four sites that were immediately conveyed, that were closed roll-off sites, and then I, it, and I, and I apologize. I've been trying to backtrack all these documents. I'm assuming that the other sites, Comrade, you know if those are the, the active sites that we have now? I can't really quite...
The ones that were conveyed, those were, were abandoned sites.
No, no, not the four that were already conveyed, the other, the additional sites that are still...
I believe those are current sites.
Okay. Yeah, I've had a little bit of difficulty tracing that down.
It's one legal description.
What it says here, uh, if I may, Mr. Chairperson, it says on paragraph two, on page one, "With respect to the remaining eight parcels of county land described on the D5 through V12, within ninety days after the parcel ceases to be used for its current purpose and it is not needed for county, needed for county purposes above, the county shall provide Foley with written notice of the parcel's availability for conveyance and Foley shall, within thirty days of the receipt of the county's notice, notify the county of election to accept or reject the conveyance of that parcel."
Was this originally Foley property?
Yeah.
I don't believe so. I, I believe it was, I don't know who owned it originally, but the county owned, owned these properties at the time. And because we had the need for properties, um, I believe they are adjacent to the closed landfill for monitoring purposes, that's when we reached out to them and asked if they would enter into an agreement with us. So there was no, from what I can tell, I didn't see an exchange of any, any funding. It was, you know, when, as, if, if and when these sites close, then they would be conveyed back to, um, to what was Foley at the time.
So these sites that, uh, we swapped, does the county still access those?
The four, the four that were swapped were closed sites.
Yes.
And they were Tenell, San Pedro, Boyd, and Spring Warrior sites. So those were, those were exchanged, it looks like, maybe back around two thousand and six or in that time period. And then we acquired the, the sites that were exchanged. And then, for the last almost twenty years, that, you know, basically, this agreement was in place. So I guess I really just need direction from the board, if you would like me to continue to work with, with them and ask if we could retain the properties for the uses that were listed. Um, I've asked Dr. Glover to, you know, send me a letter, explain what that would be, and I'll forward it to them, if that's the will of the board.
So, county owns the property today, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, so do you have to ask? I mean, I guess...
Well, I believe so, because the terms of the agreement are that once it ceases to be used as a roll-off site or a trans, well, as a transfer station, then we were to convey the property. Is that, or, Comrade, will you help me with that? Is it when they cease to be used as a roll-off site?
It says here, let's see.
Actually...
After a parcel ceases to be used for its current purpose and is not needed for county purposes.
It's county purposes.
So it's, it's kind of, um...
Who and why would that be made, but, you know, whatever.
I think part of the reason was necessary footage around the old landfill.
And it looks like originally that their predecessor is to, if you look in the background on purpose, um, it says the county land consists of twelve parcels that were conveyed to the county by Foley's predecessor in interest to be used as roll-off sites or transfer facilities.
That'd be Potter.
Right. So they were, they were conveyed to the county originally. And so then, when we needed these moni, this, this, these parcels for monitoring, we, we agreed to convey them back to what is, what was Foley at the time, what is now Four Rivers.
I think the vantage point would have been the requirement for the additional footage at the monitoring area.
Correct.
It really wasn't able by who this, this is, non, non...
We don't have access to those sites, but they, they, they're still on access to the, the closed one.
Right. So if I understand it right, uh, Mr. Lawanda, what the request is per their agreement, or their understanding, or their position even, is that it's not being used as a voting precinct.
That is one.
And that's fine. But if I understand the language, then, uh, help me, Mr. Philadelphia Attorney, um, this county purpose.
Right. If you look at it, on page one, I mean, it, it kind of hits, hits all, all things.
Sure.
Commissioner?
If, on the very last paragraph of the first page, it says, "If a parcel ceases to be used as a roll-off site or transfer facility, the county shall, within ninety days thereafter, notify Foley of the county's election to convert that parcel to an alternate county purpose. And the failure to provide such notice within ninety days periods shall conclusively evident the fact that the parcel is no longer needed for county purposes." So that's pretty stout, if you understand what I mean by stout. So, um, so you got roll-off site or transfer facility. Um, of course, everything's negotiable, but this, you know, like I said, this, uh, uh, this was a hard, hard agreement to get done at the time. Um, and it went through several, um, back and forth when it was negotiated.
Okay. So, Lawanda, you were, you may be looking for a letter from Mr. Glover?
And, right.
Say the useful uses that we could gain from the fee.
And see if they would consider it. The missing piece for me is, when, when we started using it as a voting precinct, did we, did we notify them at the time? And I'm assuming we did.
I think we did.
Okay. But...
I, I, you know, I think, that doesn't mean I know.
Right. But we did not notify them when it ceased to be used as a voting precinct, that we would no longer be using that.
Of course, a voting precinct is a county purpose.
Correct. But I think the, the terms of this agreement say, when we cease to use it for county purposes, then we were to notify them. Now, that doesn't mean we haven't used it as a staging area and, you know, and we have continued to maintain it. But, um, I, I, Comrade, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we just need to, um, request consideration.
Just like what you asked, um, Dr. Glover to do.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Do you have a motion or anything for this, Dubby?
I would think so.
No?
No, go ahead and make the motions.
Motion. A motion by Commissioner Newman, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moody, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Glover. We'll look over to the...
Yes, sir.
I move on to, out of twenty-two, the board to discuss Florida fires of long-term residency, community development, block grants, disaster recovery funding for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four storms of potential projects, presented by the Grant Rider and the County Minister.
Melody, do you wish to lead off?
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Melody.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, before I, before I get started on, um, this, um, topic, I do want to bring us, on your vote grant fees, as far as Spring Warrior, you will, uh, Mr. Lawanda, you'll need to look into, um, the site will be co-owned by us and the federal government. You will have to get approval on any vote grant fees that's a Spring Warrior site. So, um, I do want to let you all know before I get started on this, that that's important to look into that too, as far as vote grant fees.
Right.
Okay.
I'd like to move on.
As, as you know, there is going to be CDVG VR funds being released for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four storm. And the statewide plan will be released on the twenty-first, and there's a thirty-day approval period for that. We have listed some projects on here, which we have since found that will not be eligible, because any projects we submit have to be directly tied to Hurricane Adelia or Helene for us, or they have to be directly tied to future storm mitigation. There is nine hundred and twenty-five million dollars that's going to be available. That sounds like a lot, but forty-five counties are eligible to apply for this funding, and it is a competitive grant. So, um, we're going to have to have very, very good projects. The, um, closer they are to shovel ready, to our advantage. And it, they do have to meet federal guidelines. For example, um, the open grant we have for the jail generator right now, that has been so difficult and has required so much work, it is the same kind of funding, and it goes back to Hurricane Helene. So, um, the grant applications will most likely be due in sometime between late October and December. But again, these are very time-consuming grants, and we need to make sure we're being competitive. Some of the projects we thought we might, um, if you all approved, moving forward, would be the public safety complex. That would apply as it is, um, mitigation. We all know the need before, after Hurricane Adelia and Hurricane Helene. The second project, Keaton Beach Fire Rescue, would probably be a good candidate, because it is mitigation and there was damage to the existing state station. So we can tie that back in two different ways. Shady Grove Fire Rescue could potentially be a candidate because of, um, future mitigation. Taylor County Agriculture and Expo Center is on that list. That would not be eligible. Taylor County Courthouse Air Handler and Duckwork could potentially, because of the damage to the roof, and we know there was additional, um, damage there. Right now, the mold remediation is on hold till those are taken. Taylor County Animal Shelter would not be eligible. And I would say Taylor County Fire Rescue at the airport is not eligible, because it did not receive, um, it doesn't tie back directly to Adelia or Helene. And as it is the working station right now, it would not be, um, considered mitigation, would not be storm mitigation. Mr. Lawanda and I did discuss, um, we don't think we're going to have sufficient funds for the DMH rules. We will know that over the next three or four months before the grant application will be submitted. So that's, um, a potential project to consider. Also, um, Mr. Lawanda and I discussed, um, there was some concern on rebuilding the restrooms at the vote ramps, because they have to be elevated and due to the expense, those would qualify as potential projects. And we did confirm today that paving, um, would be eligible if we can tie back the need for paving to Adelia and Helene and mitigation. So we need input from y'all and how you would like us to move forward. I go to, um, someone that's going to be working locally with us with the Department of Commerce today. And thankfully, they have direct ties to Taylor County, and I think they'll be very, very helpful for us. Um, so I was really excited for that, to, to have someone with the state that has direct ties to us. Mr. Lawanda and I will be speaking with them again later this week. But we do need input from, from y'all on how you would like us to move forward.
Mr. Chairperson, if I could ask Melody a question. Melody, do we need to ask for additional dredging funds, um, because of the...
Oh, yes, that was, yes, that was on our list too, and that is actually on my agenda. We know that we are about five million dollars short on dredging for the canal that we've added. This would be, um, probably much faster to get those funds through this program than through going back to the Department of Treasury and restore. They hope, um, to award these grants in early twenty twenty-six. And we already know that if we apply for the additional funds through Treasury, we're looking at a year or two years. And you all know how, what Treasury moves at this point. So that would be a much quicker way. And we are also watching for, um, the new RIT grant that will be coming available probably midsummer. And, and, um, canal dredging would be good through that, as well as, uh, a couple of the other projects. The Ag Center, even though it's not eligible for this, that would be a good RIT candidate. But we are watching for RIT to open up too, because those funds we can get quick.
So, Melody, just listening as long as I was hearing you, some of the, uh, comments, just going into canal dredging, am I hearing that we're, we really don't even know, maybe a year or two from dredging?
That's for the additional canals, not for Keaton Beach or Steam Hatch.
No, it's not for Keaton and Steam Hatch, correct.
We're in the decline for...
As you know, we, we went out for bids on Keaton and Steam Hatch and did not receive any bids. We have that money in hand, and, um, Sir Dudley was waiting for some of the debris to be removed, to, um, revisit that. And the design engineering is permanent, is currently underway for DeKalb, Dark Island...
Cedar.
DeKalb, Dark Island, Cedar Island, and we just added Spring Warrior to our list, which, as soon as the acquisition's complete, we can move forward with that. That work is in hand, but we know for the actual dredging of Cedar, DeKalb, and Dark Island, we don't have sufficient funds in hand.
Understood. Okay. Just a question, we can get back on track now. Um, any comments from the board, discussion, um...
Chairman, I do, I think we need to give great consideration to, um, the streets and the damage that, that was incurred there, paving and restoration, resurfacing. There were a number of those that we're still dealing with because of, uh, problems with asphalt, things of that nature. So, um, of course, um, Mr. Evans certainly has a list of, of what we've been working through. But if, if the, the resurfacing or paving is eligible, I believe she said it is...
We checked on that, Melody checked on that today.
Yes, 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 it is eligible.
Right. Does that have to be resurfacing, or, or how does that work?
I think...
I can find out from her. I just asked if paving was eligible, and she said, yes, paving is eligible. And she did confirm it with, um, the, the deputy director of the program too. So it is eligible. I, I did not specify to her anything other than paving, but I can confirm, um, when Mr. Lawanda and I speak with them on what do they consider paving.
So, with respect to that, could, Melody, could, uh, the issues on, and I know we're addressing this potentially, does the issue, the Turner Road issue be handled through this as well?
I would think so, from all the issues that are, are there. We can, we can ask them that in particular, that I would, I would guess it would be eligible.
Yeah, I mean, I've just, the last few weeks, I've got a bunch of calls, and that's...
I mean, that's something we can, I, I think there's probably potential interest for... I mean, that's something we can, I think there's probably potential interest for paving, resurfacing, elevating portions of roads, so we can explore all that with Commerce. What I'd like to do is send them a list of projects that the board would like to be considered. Go ahead and submit that to them, and then they can help us work through what would potentially be eligible or not.
Well, I'm certainly not opposed to that if eligibility is there, but I'm, per a conversation I had yesterday, Ms. Wawand is aware, our residents are being told by another state entity that there's funding in Tallahassee that'll touch Turner Road, so we're going to be seeking that out. And so I'm not saying we couldn't use funding from this option, but I'm absolutely, and I was very clear to that resident that we would be more than glad to give these agencies the opportunity to write a check, and we're looking forward to it.
Well, we will definitely, when we speak with them, we will definitely speak to them about the Turner Road situation. And we can, you know, report that, more than happy to report that back to you.
So I guess our question is.
And we can get with Mr. Hank and get a list of roads that he considers critical. We can do that, and we can have that information for them too.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'd be more than glad to contribute to that opportunity.
So the question is, Melody, I think the question is, is if the board wants us to submit all the projects on this list that we know are not ineligible, and.
If you know it's not ineligible, why wouldn't you submit it?
Correct. So that would be the public safety complex, the Keaton Beach Fire Rescue and Public Safety, the Shady Grove Fire Rescue and Public Safety, the Courthouse Air Handler and Duckwork, the DMH roof, restrooms at the Keaton Beach Boat Ramp. I think the Steam Hatch is okay. Critical roads that need paving or repair. Dredging, and was that it? Melody, did I get everything?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Hodges Park?
Hodges Park, yeah. I think there's already, we don't have funding for that.
Or nothing?
I believe so.
Yes, yes, we have the funding for Hodges, so that we don't have to worry about.
So we had agreement with the project.
Well, one thing we did discuss was the possible elevation of the straw restroom. Is that included?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I missed that one, sorry.
All right, so we have a list. And we need a motion to probably move forward with this.
Motion.
And there may be other, other things that come to light as we move through the process, but this is just a list to submit to Commerce of the potential projects.
And before, and before we go, there's going to be additional funding released for housing, for houses damaged during Adelia. I spoke with their program director today, and we know we're not going to have funding for 26 of the 43 applications we've received. So she's going to work closely with us with those applicants. And she indicated to me, if I can provide a list of those applicants to her and their email addresses, what we will do is go ahead and get those individuals pre-qualified, and the state will actually be accepting those applications and administering those funds. The county doesn't have to do it directly, but they would be willing to contact those individuals and get them pre-qualified and start working with them, because that program is going to be first come, first served. So just to let you know, I know y'all know some of the applicants. I will work with getting that information from answer and get that provided to the state here within the next few weeks. And we'll go on and start working with them, get that information to the state, and once then, start working with those individuals.
One thing I'd like to ask, Ms. Wawand, would that be a way to get some funding on the cleaning out all this debris in these creeps?
I don't, I don't know. As, as you and I discussed, I, there may be some additional funding through another program for all of that waterway debris removal. I'll, it depends on how quickly. I have sent that list to Swanee River Water Management District, and they are going to try to help us come up with a dollar figure of what it would cost to complete that debris removal. And that may be something we can pursue through, I'm not, through these funds. And maybe by then, we'll have a better idea of the cost.
I didn't, I didn't know if, you know, get into that category or not.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Melody.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, moving on to item 23, the county administrator to present the annual status report for economic and labor tax exemption for Steam Hatch Marina at Dead Man's Bay.
So these reports are a little late this year. I had some issues receiving the report from one of the entities, there was an employee change. But nevertheless, here they are. For Steam Hatch Marina at Dead Man's Bay, if you recall, they applied for the economic development tax exemption in 2022. And they anticipated a large capital investment in 10 years in the creation of 35-plus jobs over a 10-year period. At the time of this report, Steam Hatch Marina has created, their reporting, they have created 69 jobs, 12 full-time and 57 part-time. Forty-three percent live in Taylor County. And there is a list of the jobs that were created and their rates that pay. And some of them are newer positions that were either created or filled in 2024.
Any questions from the board?
I mean, we, they are trying to fulfill their commitment, I think, but we offered before, I think we should still stand. This is going to be the third year of that.
Correct, and they are current on their tax payments?
Do we need a motion to move forward?
I think just a motion to accept the report. Now, just for the board and the public's information, the actual abatement amounts for Steam Hatch Marina for last year was $3,731.
Need a motion to let?
We got one by Commissioner Dent. Thank you by Commissioner Moody, all in favor. All right, we'll move on to item 24, the same. So the county administrator to present the annual status report for economic and labor tax exemption for Super Puff Snatch USA.
So this is a similar report. Super Puff applied for this at the alarm tax exemption in 2019. They anticipated a $20 million capital investment in two years in the creation of 100-plus jobs. As of the date of this report, they, they're reporting a total creation of 162 jobs. Ninety-five percent of total employees live within Taylor County. They are current on their taxes as well.
Any discussions from the board? Motion to accept.
Thank you. I move.
Thank you by Commissioner Dent to accept that second. Thank you, Commissioner Moody, all in favor. All right, we move to item 25, the board discussed approved starting salary for mechanics.
This was an informational item requested by Commissioner Fiegel. I don't know if you wish to table this or accept the information, but the starting pay for a mechanic one is $14 per hour. The starting pay for mechanic two is $1522 per hour. We do have a vacancy in our environmental services department, which has, of course, added to some of the issues we've had with our trucks being down. I, I don't know that I would call this a competitive salary, unfortunately. When you're looking at the hourly amount, however, we do offer rich benefits. But that position was vacated, I believe, the end of December and remains unfilled. There, we did have one applicant and could not meet his salary requirements because he could make substantially more with another entity as a diesel mechanic.
Change potentially, look at.
I am not, I'm not sure this is something Commissioner Fiegel requested, so do you wish to table it until the next meeting?
Yes. Everyone that agrees. She's the one that put it on here to discuss.
She, she did ask me to follow up, so I just added it to the agenda.
Now, where do you want to see if we approve of going up on the?
No, sir, that is not what I'm suggesting. I was following up with a request from Commissioner Fiegel. Of course, I would love, you know, for, for some of these rates to change. But these are the approved rates that were approved during last budget cycle, and I just wanted to bring them back to the board.
Does someone have any recommendations on what we should do, or if there should be any changes?
I'm not aware.
Getting a good mechanic at that price is going to be a blessing if you find one.
I would agree.
All right, so do we want to table that item?
We need to.
Table it at the next meeting. Item 25A. The board to consider approval of FMIC turnkey coverage memorandum of understanding in election form for the courthouse roof replacement, it's in by the county administrator.
So in spirit of talking about our insurance coverage, this is one of the programs that benefits us through Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. It's their turnkey program, and basically if a damage, damage to a building is more than our deductible amount, there is the possibility of them taking it, it's what they call a turnkey project, which is basically they, they do the legwork for us. The fiscal impact for the repairs to the courthouse roof, the deductible is $399,850. The repairs are estimated at $500,000 to $1 million because it's not only, I think, replacing at least a portion of the roof, but some of the interior repairs. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for tomorrow. We are eager to move forward on this courthouse roof repair, and which is why we added it to the agenda for consideration.
It is leaking?
It has leaked. I don't know that it's actively leaking because of the mitigation efforts that they took. I mean, they've made several visits to that roof to stabilize it, but we've had, with all three storms, I think we've had some issues.
Motion to approve? Motion? Motion by Commissioner Moody to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody, all in favor. Good, item 26, county administrator to discuss informational items.
I have just a few items that I wanted to update the board on. The first is very unfortunate. I found out today that we have had a puppy who tested positive for parvo at our shelter. The puppy did not survive. We have, there were actually three puppies lost out of that litter. It was an owner surrender with multiple puppies. The puppies were tested upon intake, everyone was vaccinated for parvovirus, but unfortunately, they, they were not protected. I'm, I'm assuming they were already exposed, but the incubation period can be anywhere from three to 14 days is what it looks like. So the recommendation is that we close the shelter to all animals moving in and out, all dogs moving in and out for 14 days. We actually had lost a puppy over the weekend. Immediately on Monday, upon entry, you know, to the shelter, they deep cleaned and sanitized. And then unfortunately today, there were, between the weekend and today, there were two more puppies that were lost. This is a highly contagious disease, and what we would like to do is put something on our Facebook page, on our website, letting people know that we will not be able to take any intakes and not adopt any pets out for the 14-day period. And we will continue to quarantine the best we can, but we definitely need to limit traffic to, to the dogs and be very careful with the remaining dogs at the shelter.
Who's they calling that, parva?
Parvovirus.
How long has it been in existence?
Years?
Oh, many years. We have not, as far as I know, now I don't want to speak out of turn, but I don't recall a parvo outbreak for some time, but this is the time of year it normally happens. And puppies under the year, at the age of one year, are the most susceptible because they do not have the natural antibodies. We do test and vaccinate, but obviously, we, you know, with, with these puppies coming in, we were unable to prevent it.
I'll just, you understand? Them don't agree with me, and I'm bored of them, just going to laugh.
You're going to be down for 14 days from today?
Yes. Well, I would say, well, I would say today, yes. Tomorrow, I mean, we will get the word out as quickly as we can. I know even today, I spoke with a citizen who was insistent that we take owner surrenders, but it's just not safe for, for the dogs. Even if we vaccinate them, I don't think that they are protected immediately, and they would be vulnerable.
I see in the calendar properly here. Okay.
Need a motion?
It's not on the agenda, I just wanted to inform the board. And that's, that's my understanding, that's standard protocol. Also wanted to inform the board that we have received some interest from Top Gun Sports USA to have tournaments starting in April. It looks like twice a month, April, May, and June, they're interested in having tournaments at our facility. And as of right now, they do not need concession staff, which is, helps our workload greatly. They just wish to maybe use some of the amenities or have food trucks. Before they start these tournaments, we would have the, the application for the food trucks and, and have all of that, have the agreement in hand. I just wanted to let the board know that we have been successful in, in having another organization interested in using our facility.
And just saying that, that doesn't mean that the tournaments will happen. It would just, you'll have to have the teams.
Right.
Enter.
Right.
Into the tournaments. What we're giving today is set, so if you don't get the two or three teams, likely the tournament's not going to happen, so.
And that's what's happened in the past. I think we've been successful as an overflow facility, but you have to have those teams sign up, and it seems like, pardon the pun, hit or miss. So.
That's good news.
Yes. Also wanted to give you a quick update about debris removal. As far as our, the right-of-way debris removal, at the last time I checked, there was a total of 5,466 total cubic yards on the non-county maintained roads. And our county maintained roads is at 728, 446. Still an estimated $1.8 million cubic yards, excuse me, million cubic yards of debris. They haven't changed that amount. Our mowing contractor has started picking up trash from roads that are cleared from FDOT. And as of last week, they had picked up over 660 bags of trash, which is a lot. So they are quite busy, and that's, that's just a few roads. So they have been picking up trash. You know, FD, of cour-, FDOT has been removing debris. Once a road is considered clear, then our crews enter that road and pick up any existing, like, debris that's a diameter of two inches or, or larger. and pick up any existing, like, debris that's a diameter of two inches or, or larger. So I think between the, all of the entities, we're making some progress. Still a lot of concrete out there that will be the last to be removed, but we seem to be making headway. On our waterway debris removal, we are at a total of 100, over 134,000 cubic yards for Taylor County. And that includes eight to 10 miles of the Assillo River, seven to eight miles on the Ekonfina, six to seven miles on the Finn Holloway, two to three work miles on Spring Warrior, and approximately eight to nine miles on the Steam Hatchie River. They are on pause at the Finn Holloway. There is an area that seems to be inaccessible. There's rock shoals there, but I'm receiving daily updates from them. But I am very grateful to FDM for doing this on our behalf. They have done a phenomenal job, as far as I'm concerned, with this river cleanup, and I'm hoping that it will be a great help with flooding concerns in the future. And my last update is that our building official, Terry McKeever, has received his provisional license, so he's our official building official. Mr. Johnson is still working part-time to train Mr. McKeever. We're extremely busy right now. There's a lot of moving pieces with issuing permits, rebuilding plants. I would like for him to stay until the end of the month, if possible. That's only, that's only two weeks. And I feel like Mr. McKeever will be better prepared at that point to be able to work independently. And one last question. Mr. Commissioner Moody, is it Dorman Road or Dorman Peacock Road?
Dorman Road is what it says on, on the aerial.
Okay.
I thought Dorman Peacock when I was 27.
I thought so too.
Well, it was the gentleman who was in the audience, so I just wanted to make sure. Dorman Peacock is a paved road. Dorman Road is graded. So that's the one that, okay, okay.
It's a graded road.
That's all right?
I got it.
Thank you.
I do too.
Item 27, comments and concerns from the public for non-adjourned items. All right. To board informational items, Commissioner Dent.
I have to tell you, keep doing what you're doing, and we all survive.
I appreciate these updates. These numbers are quite, when you look at, of counties, the differences are substantial. So, and I know this is just on the waterways, so.
They have done a lot for us, and I think part of the reason you see that discrepancy is they included the marsh cleanup in those numbers as well, and we know there was, there was a lot of, of debris in the, in the marsh.
Well, I mean, I'm just quite thankful to be at this point. I know we've got more work to do, but thank you for those efforts and for all those things.
Well, I'd say I've got several phone calls from people about Finn Holloway River. Getting it cleaned out was a blessing, because the last time we tried to get it cleaned out, the last storm, we couldn't get no help with it. They did a good job at Finn Holloway. People said it's better than it's been in 20 years, you know, so I'm glad we got that done. Get rid of work that's good for the commercial. And remember, they go in and out there. They couldn't only go, they had to fight the tide every time. They had to rush to get back in, and that kind of thing. Now they can, they can go, and they're real proud of it.
They still got to rush, because they didn't get rid of the sandbags.
I'll put it in the chat.
They got to get them corncut all like them. That's all I got.
So, yeah, all I have is just thinking of our planning board and some of the footprints that we're looking at. I know we've got a lot of things rolling through our building department. Maybe, you know, you would know, you'd be able to chase it down better than I would, but maybe, you know, a lot of, as much as it's coming through, would it be feasible for that board to meet four of them once a month? I just, I just know that, just talking to some of those folks, I mean, they had five items. They already knew that was at the last meeting that they had. Now you've got five citizens out there that's got to wait another month to get what they want, to get approval on what they're looking to do. And we, we had the, the information, but the information wouldn't be shared until the next meeting a month away, so then you've got citizens waiting that much longer.
I mean, we can certainly look at that. I think the only, the only other timing consideration is, if it's like, if it's a land use change and it has to be, I mean, it, it, there are certain things that have to be advertised, and then we may have to meet more often as a tech review committee, but I'll certainly take that to, to our team and ask them if that's possible. That, the timing is the only thing that I wouldn't be sure about.
Maybe it's the thing they have to, steps you have to take in order to get.
Yes, sir.
Is there a tag committee that meets prior to, on some of these items, prior to?
Well, there's tech review.
I got you.
Yes. So tech review meets, and then a recommendation is made to the planning board. So that may, but that's for, I mean, that's really for all development, and we met today. And then these, those items that we voted on today would be on the next agenda for the planning board. So we may just have to look at the calendar and see what we, what we need to do.
Well, if there's things that can move along, then maybe it's, you know, something that, to help citizens move along, and then not.
Well, I know we had a tech review committee meeting today, and I think the next planning board meeting is the third of April, so that is, I mean, that is a couple of weeks for, for folks. And those are mainly variance applications where they're, you know, but I know what we've tried to tell folks is once tech review committee approves, go ahead and bring in your plans, and we can be reviewing the plans, so you're not waiting two weeks. You know, we can look at the plans before the planning board meets, and it's just, you know, that, that doesn't harm anything. And then the permit would be issued if the planning board approves.
Very good. All I have to, nothing else. I would like to adjourn. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Dent, all in favor?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Blindly, you did.
Thank you for digging that with us.